Something you said?
It must have been.
I'll slide down there. In a heartbeat.
Ed Hoops is the chair, and he always sits there.
Good evening, and welcome, everyone, to the March 1st, 2023 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. As this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and remote participants, I'll read the following statement into the record. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts Chapter General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an Act Relative to Extending Certain State of Emergency Accommodations, signed into law on June 16, 2021, the Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. In the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. Public is welcome to attend via remote access, provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website. I will begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin.
Present.
Susan Britta.
Present.
Will Rubenstein.
Present.
Chris Vincent. Jim Saban.
Present.
Ken Smith.
Present.
Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum present, I'll now call the meeting to order. For remote public participation during the public comment period during this meeting, at my discretion, I'll invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use the raise hand button to notify me. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized by me to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for the public record. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda this evening is regarding definitive subdivision number 2936(c). We will be endorsing the definitive plan 2936(c), submitted by the Davenport Companies, a 14-lot cluster subdivision located on an unnumbered lot on Route 6A, Assessors Map 12539, Parcel 39. It's necessary to execute this approval at a public meeting. Attorney Paul Tardif is in attendance, and so we'll do the signing.
It just has gone through the 20-day appeal period with no appeals, so now we can actually sign it. Same thing with the special permit. Also went through the 20-day appeal period with no appeals, so Paul has that for recording as well.
Paul, do you have any idea about what time they'll start breaking ground?
No, I know we're gonna probably close in about...
Is there more than one chapter this one?
Two, three.
It's just one. I know it's extra thick. I used to do it being thinner.
Time to spring.
Be careful, sorry. Once it's dry.
Thank you, Mr. Tardif, for attending tonight. Appreciate that. Oh, you're welcome. Next on our agenda is municipal wastewater, and some discussion by the planning board with regard to providing a support letter. Town officials are seeking letters of support for our wastewater proposal and project for the annual town meeting and forever. Kathy Williams has a brief presentation for us on the status of the project and has included a draft letter for our review. So, Kev, they've been traveling around.
Yes. Just so everyone knows, Jeff Colby and his team are going to be going before the Conservation Commission tomorrow night. They're also going to be giving a presentation on the kind of the status of the wastewater, but they're also looking for some permitting related to the collection systems that are in a resource area, as well as I believe there's one pump station that they need to get approval for. So this is literally their presentation for tomorrow night, so. I think we all know why we're doing wastewater. It always helps to kind of reiterate it. We have a lot of deterioration in our estuaries due to our heavy reliance on septic system and nitrogen pollution. We've had a lot of expansion in our population over the years, a 722% increase since 1951 to 2010. The Massachusetts Estuaries Program did look at our Lewis Bay, Parker's River, and Bass River estuaries and determined that they need to have 59.5% removal of septic systems in the Bass River watershed, 96% in the Parker's River watershed, and 80% in the Lewis Bay watershed. The Parker's River watershed is actually better than that because we did do that tidal restoration project by expanding the bridge, so that's helped with the flushing in that area. These are just some pictures of some algae blooms fairly recently in the Bass River, kind of highlighting the difficulties that we're having. I think we've all kind of heard about the new mass DEP regulations to Title V, where basically saying the next five years they want everyone on Cape Cod or basically in an impaired water estuary to have an innovative or alternative IA system installed, or alternatively, towns may obtain a watershed permit from DEP to avoid having this mandate being implemented. Obviously, the town of Yarmouth is working very heavily to have a municipal wastewater system so that we're not talking about having individual IA systems, which would be extremely expensive to the individual homeowners, very expensive to maintain on an annual basis, and would not get us down to the levels of nitrogen removal that we need. So really, this community-wide wastewater program is going to be less costly to all homeowners and actually get us to the status of the environment that we really need. The environmental project has a lot of, obviously, this is something that we've been talking about for a long time. Not only is it going to be helping our environment, but it's also going to be having economic benefits. The Donahue Institute did an economic development report in 2018, and they saw, identified about $100 million worth of pent-up development along Route 28 due to a lack of wastewater. So we really are expecting this wastewater to allow for some investment within our main commercial corridors. Phase 1 is Route 28 and South Shore Drive to help reduce that burden on the residential property taxes. Anytime someone actually goes and improves their property by putting money and investing in their property, that's considered new growth. That's new tax revenue to the town that we can capture. And we also have a district improvement financing program all along the area of the first phase 1 so that we can capture that new growth revenue and direct it towards the infrastructure for wastewater. Land use controls and growth management. Obviously, we want to make sure that we're not going to be having uncontrolled growth in the town of Yarmouth. The land use control regulations are something that are required by the state revolving fund, and we have submitted a draft to them, which I believe has been approved. Basically, it kind of just identifies to you how you're going to manage your growth to meet your maximum build-out. Maximum build-out is based, was developed through the Community Development Department. It's kind of based on not every lot developing to 100% zoning, but taking into consideration the different zoning that's in place right now, especially, we've had a lot of changes with the VCOD since the 2011 build-out was done, since the MEP reports were done, so that has been updated. So, a quick DHY update. I mean, we all know that we had tried for many, many years to partner with our neighbors, but we have enough difficulty getting our own residents to reach consensus, so trying to get three community residents to reach the same consensus was just a little bit too daunting, and it was taking too much time, and any cost benefits to going regional was really being eaten up with inflationary costs. So we decided to have a local approach, and we're having our, I'm never going to get this one right, we're having our water resource reclamation facility, what I would refer to as a wastewater treatment facility, at 99 Buck Island Road. So there's been a lot of things that have been happening since we decided to go away from the DHY. Back in 2020, we got $5.2 million for the design and engineering for the collection system, so the CDM Smith has been actively working on that. In 2020, we also developed a municipal water infrastructure investment fund, and this is where that certain percentage of the CPA funds that got reduced and got directed into this particular fund. We also in 2021 established the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, which, at that meeting, we also put $1.6 million into that particular fund. In 2021, we also voted to have the $4.5 million for funding the design and engineering and permitting related to the treatment facility, which they're working on very hard right now, and I think they're going to be having 60% design plans in the next month. 2022 Annual Town Meeting, we had the Wastewater Infrastructure Stabilization Fund, and that's where we directed 75% of the short-term rental tax revenue to wastewater through that fund. Also in 2022, we started the beginning and established the District for the District Improvement Financing Program. That's Phase 1 of that DIF program. What's coming up at Annual Town Meeting is a little bit more of the details that Assistant Town Administrator Bill Scott's been working very, very hard on. I believe there's going to be a hearing before the Board of Selectmen sometime in March, as well as the full report will be available at the end of March with the Town Clerk's Office as well. We also got approval from MIPA for our Notice of Project Change, because we changed, because we had to add in the Bass River watershed, which we didn't have before in 2011 because the MEP report wasn't completed. The best news going is in January of 2023, Yarmouth was ranked number one in the intended use plan of the state revolving loan fund for low or no-interest loans. We are primed and at the cusp to be able to get that amazing zero or low-interest loans from the state. We were rated number one. So we just need to keep moving forward to Annual Town Meeting and then get this passed. And the town is also, to help add some horsepower, has hired consultants to help with the District Improvement Financing and also looking at betterment programs. And I know that Ken's been getting a lot of information at the RAC meetings with regard to betterments and that type of thing right now, but they're looking at different, how much it might cost for betterments, how much it might cost for user fees as well. It's an eight-phase plan, and each phase is expected to take about five years, so about 40 years, to build us out under the current plan. I think once you get into some of the later phasing, those things can kind of move around. We should really be concentrating on Phase 1, which is going to be at the Annual Town Meeting in April. And this is Phase 1, which is basically all along the backbone, basically the spine of the collection system along Route 28, and then it's going to go down and pick up all of the hotels along the South Shore Drive area down here. What they've done is they've broken this Phase 1 up into six different contracts. Contract 1 will be the treatment facility, which is up here. Contract 2 is going to be this section of Route 28 and Old Main Street over here. It's not part of a mass DOT project, so that's being done out separately. They also wanted to break up the collection system into reasonable chunks where people could actually bid on it. One contractor could bid on it, another contractor could bid on another section, and they could also be working on off non-state roads during the summer season because they can't work on mass DOT state highways during the summer. So they wanted to give some, breaking it up so there'd be some other places for them to be working. Contract 3 is this segment here, basically east of Parker's River to Skull Island, and then down to South Shore Drive. Contract 4 is actually over here by the Bass River, and that's part of the mass DOT project for the Bass River Bridge replacement, as well as the Four Corners improvements that they're doing. And then Contract 5 is this big, long segment from the Barnstable Town Line to the Parker's River, and that's also part of another potentially mass DOT project. We're trying to see if we can't piggyback on them and have them do some of the project admin and some of the costs related to that in order to keep the costs down. And then the final Contract 6 would be the pump stations in Contract 5. So, funding sources. I think we've all been talking about this for a really long time. They have a really detailed finance program now, trying to identify all these different sources of funding, and you can see from back to 2020, we've been squirreling away all these different sources of money for wastewater, to keep it off the tax levy to as much as possible. So, obviously, there's that Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust that was done, where that 2.75% of your short-term rentals goes in there. This notes that there's the supplemental $200 million appropriation from the governor, but I'm not sure if that actually went through or not. And again, the water infrastructure and investment funds that I had mentioned previously, the local short-term rental receipts, the 75% that's going in there, all of the new growth revenue from the District Improvement Financing Program, and then there's going to also be some user-generated revenues for betterments when people connect, and also capital charges on operating rates. We're also, I think, on Annual Town Meeting, or we're going to be looking at, right now, when you do a betterment, I think you have to charge 5%. We want to get it down to 2%, so we can keep it as low as possible for our residents, and that's something that you could have on your taxes as a betterment for up to 30 years. So it's really affordable for people when they're connecting there for the betterment. And then, of course, we're always looking for state and federal grant funds for all our projects. So kind of the next steps, they're working on, I believe, the Contract 2 and 3 right now, and hope to have that actually out to bid and have bids in hand for Annual Town Meeting, is my understanding. And they're also going to use those unit prices to cost out the rest of the project, because costs have been kind of like this, and so having an actual bid in hand will give us some solid information. They're also hope to complete the treatment facility by the end of this year as well. And again, the big appropriation for the construction of all of Phase 1 is happening at this Annual Town Meeting coming up in April. What you're seeing down here is just a little breakdown of the different six contracts within that Phase 1 and kind of giving you some idea of the timeframe. So, looking at this, it's really looking like the first time that everything is going to be, all the collection system and the treatment facility will be online, would be in 2026. So what we're hoping to do is have all the different, all the different boards and committees write a support memo associated with this project, and I think we had done that previously when it was DHY providing a support letter. But I think we're all trying to provide our support letters, kind of referencing things that are important to us, are applicable or germane to the particular board or committee. And one of the things that I think is germane to us is all the hard work that we've done on the visioning process and what we've heard from the residents and what's important to them, and obviously, the environment, having an attractive community and having diverse business interests are all things that are important and kind of outlining in this draft letter that you have in your packets that really municipal wastewater plays a critical role in meeting that shared vision that was identified during the Vision Plan, and really also encouraging redevelopment and revitalization and refreshing all of our commercial areas, so they look better, because aesthetics was another thing that was really important during the visioning process. And not having to deal with wastewater allows people to have more resources in order to invest into their properties and modernize them and make them look the way we want them to look. And maybe they can start doing things like different types of diverse job opportunities and providing more housing for our workforce and mixed-use type developments. And all of this helps that new growth revenue that keeps it off the residential tax base. So we really are at a kind of a cusp of a really great opportunity here, and we're kind of hoping to get some type of support letter from the planning board on that.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that. What I'd like to do is just get some general comments from board members. I would like to have, I think I have a good memory about the to and froms on this, and if it can be a memo, I think I would prefer it to be a memo from the planning board, and it would be addressed to the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen. It'd be from all of us. I don't have any particular adjustments or edits for the content of the note, Kathy. I think focusing on our work in the visioning plan was really important, and I appreciate you putting this together. Comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment. First, I went through the memo and thought that what is in here is, you know, very well done. One clarification on your earlier slides, the $200 million that former Governor Baker had appropriated is stalled in appropriations and has not been allocated, just so clarification on that. But the one piece that, you know, I've heard from the community, there's still some concerns about the cost side of it, you know, to the homeowner. And certainly, the first phase is looking at the spine of Route 28 and South Shore Drive, where mostly businesses. But I do think that, you know, one piece I'd like to see in here is just the hard work that's been done to try and get that betterment fee down to, you know, as low as possible, as low as a burden as we can get it, to the homeowner, because that certainly is a major concern that I'm still hearing about it. I think the vision, what has to happen with this sewerage system, I'm 100% in favor of it, but I still am hearing comments from the public on, you know, how much is it going to cost us? They have concerns, you know, how am I going to afford it, not realizing if we don't do it, they're not going to be able to afford an nitrogen system either, so.
Yeah. I think we need to decide how we would want to incorporate that in, because each committee is kind of, has their own, I think, skew on it. So for us to start talking about betterments when I think maybe some other committees, like CEDC...
I'm not saying specific about betterments, just that the hard work that's been done to make sure that they understand that, you know, we're trying to make this as cost-effective to the residents as possible. I don't want to get into the weeds about betterments within this memo.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Susan.
Just want to make sure that we're, that...
If we could just wait, just one second while Kathy finishes her...
Thank you.
With her red pen.
The sentence that says...
Red pen is out.
I'm sorry?
Let me know when you finish.
I'm done.
Okay. The sentence that says, "Property owners will have more financial resources." I want to make sure that people understand that the town's not providing those financial resources. They will be released from their own. Do you think that's clear enough in that sentence, or do you think we should... When I read it, I thought, hmm, I wonder if people will interpret that as the town, because I think at one point, weren't they going to have some sort of a fund that people could, maybe that's not in the mix anymore, but at one point, I thought they talked about having a fund that residents could either borrow from to do the pipe linkage?
Well, there is now. There is now. The Barnstable County offers a septic loan program that you can apply to the Barnstable County for a loan for your septic improvements. People in Hyannis have done it over the years while they've had sewers, and it's a 30-year note with a particular percentage rate, and it's a very valuable tax credit on the Massachusetts side. I only know this because of my little bit of volunteering on tax work. And clients publicly, disclosure, I'm a volunteer with the AARP Foundation, and I prepare tax returns at senior centers. And they come in for these septic credits, which is a particular septic credit on your taxes in Massachusetts, and it's all driven by this loan fund that is in Barnstable County. So yes, in answer to that, there is that opportunity for them to borrow at very low interest rates, and be able to take a credit for their costs, a real tax credit.
Okay. As long as, if you read it, as long as you didn't, when I read the sentence, I said, hmm, I wonder if someone would misinterpret that. I don't want them, the residents, thinking that, that we are going to provide all the financial resources. That's just not, that's just not the case. If you're comfortable with the sentence, that's fine.
I think the sentence before it explains where the money's coming from, "by eliminating the cost burdens and limitations of onsite wastewater systems." Maybe that's the same sentence. "Giving property owners more financial resources to transform and invigorate."
Okay, I'm just, that's fine.
Yep. Mr. Saban?
Just a couple things. One of my quick questions was, Kathy, when you gave us your presentation, there was something about towns could enter into watershed agreement? Is that what I saw?
Yes. Basically, the mass...
To get away from the septic improvements, yeah.
So, obtain a watershed permit.
Right.
First of all, let me stop by saying, we need to do this. I mean, this is a no-brainer to me. So, I always try to figure out what the objections are, and to me, there shouldn't be any, but I know there will be. And I guess one of my questions is, well, why aren't we applying, or have we applied for, what is a watershed permit, and wouldn't it be cheaper for me to go get the town to do that than spend all the money doing this?
Basically, the watershed permit is showing to mass DEP how the town is going to be removing 75% of the nitrogen in that watershed. So it's essentially what we're doing.
Right.
I think it's, and I think they were trying to get some argument of saying, well, can't our comprehensive wastewater plan be that watershed plan, because we're showing how we're doing it? But I think the difference is that I think they wanted these watershed plans to be 20 years. We have a 40-year plan. So I think that there needs to be some discussion on the length of the plans. But the only, the 20 years, you only need to reach the 75%, I believe.
And again, I'm fully in favor of this. I think just having, understanding what some potential objections could be that are better for those who are presenting in the future. You know, we talked about the cost of this, but the cost of having our, I'm so old that I remember being able to go to Lewis Bay and pick up scallops after a storm. Doesn't happen anymore. You couldn't find a scallop in Lewis Bay, I don't think. So, the cost of not doing this is far greater than the cost of doing it. And I'm of the generation that was told that we should leave this place a little bit better than when we found it. And if we don't do this, we won't.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also agree that this is a must-do, and I'm glad that we're actually able to support it publicly, at least for the first time since I've been a member of the planning board. I have a comment on one of the slides, the one that had all the dates on it confused me at the end, the contract dates, because I saw something about 2023. So, in column 2, does that mean that contract that's being put out to bid is going to start in July, those contracts 2 and 3?
My understanding is that they want to have bids in hand for town meeting for 2 and 3.
That says construction start date, so, okay.
Yes, and starting in July.
And I think that's an important thing to point out, because I feel like, at least for some of us, maybe not you, Ken, because you're a little closer to it, it feels like this vague, it's been feeling like this thing that's out there in the future. And now, the future is literally four months from now. So I think that's something that I would mention to Jeff, you know, if you do have a chance to chat with him, and I think that's part of the momentum, and it feeling real is actually understanding that, no, the money that was spent in the previous town meetings, as I'm really glad was pointed out on those previous slides, is actually going to start getting spent, or has already, in some cases, already been spent. But it is actually going to start, even if there's going to be no shovels necessarily. I know it says construction start date, but I'm not really sure exactly if that's going to be the case. But it does seem to be more real, and I think that's the important point. The second point I wanted to make was, you mentioned that Mr. Colby and his team were going to different committees, and I guess I was wondering if you could shed some light on, is there going to be a point or a time where this committee is going to have to make any kinds of decisions, or is sort of all of that been taken and put into other committees' hands for various reasons?
I think what's happening now is there's kind of a wastewater team.
Right.
And we have actually hired a communications expert, and this was somewhat of an old presentation that hasn't been updated. There are going to be a whole program that's going to be rolling out, and we're meeting on Friday, and I haven't heard all the details on it. But there's going to be updated presentations, updated information for the public, and I don't really know how many other meetings they're going to be having. They might have another, I know that they're having the one with the Conservation Commission again, because they also need a permit from them, and I think they might be going to the Board of Health as well, if I don't, if I'm not mistaken. But I think right now, the only thing that the planning board needs to do is to endorse it, understanding that any land use controls are just basically somewhat in the hands of the sewer commissioners, which is the Board of Selectmen, and that there needs to be some type of sewer regulations and sewer allocation beyond the land use control regulations, that kind of outline, when do you need to hook up? How do you hook up? You know, how do you go about getting a sewer allocation? Is it going to be first-come, first-served? Are we going to be giving certain preferences to types of projects that we want? I have no idea. Those are things that need to be discussed, but we have, you know, a couple of years to figure that out. What we really are set in is our maximum build-out, which gives us about 750,000 to 800,000 gallons per day of new wastewater flow to be allocated through all eight phases of the town.
So that was really helpful. Thank you. It just makes me think that, given the amount of work that the select board is asked to do already, that I can understand at this point in the 40-year, the 40-year journey, well, more, but at this point, the start of the 40-year journey, I can understand at this point why they would act as sewer commissioners. I would assume, or I would guess, that there would be, at some point, a separate sewer commission with sewer commissioners that are not the Board of Selectmen because of the amount of work that is going to start to have to get done, right? So this is where we are now, may not be where we are in 18 to 24 to 36 months with sewer commission.
Good point. And there also could be certain things that are just simply, certain level, lower-level things that are allocated to staff, you know, that are just kind of really just updated on it. I think in the future, we definitely are going to need to start looking at some of our zoning, you know, to kind of see, you know, are we, I know that Bill Scott is looking into that Route 28 market study. What kind of things do we want to bring to the town of Yarmouth? Not what do we have and try to market it, but what do we want to bring? And maybe we need to start looking at ways of trying to enhance or entice people to come for those particular uses. for those particular uses, whatever may come out of that particular study. And that will feed into the LCP, which will feed into amendments to the zoning.
So then perhaps, as we just think about our agenda, big picture, as was related to our last meeting, where we were also trying to look big picture about certain town meetings and certain times to get ready for certain town meetings, to propose things that hopefully will pass. It feels like, at some point in this calendar year, we'll have to start at least talking about at which town meeting, working backwards, would we like to be ready?
I'd like to think.
It doesn't sound like anything for 2023, but maybe for 2024, 2025, town meetings, maybe fall of those years.
I'd like to get through the LCP, because I think that will be our guidelines. And then after that, I think then we can start saying, all right, maybe we need more, a more aggressive rewrite of our zoning bylaw at that particular time. We've kind of been kind of piecemealing things as opportunities have come along, and maybe we need to stop and take a breath and look more comprehensively at everything that's in our zoning bylaw.
And given, given the passion and the interest to be educated on the revision of the ADU or the accessory apartment bylaw, this particular opportunity to look even bigger picture, but maybe make more impact in some ways, I would argue, than perhaps 10 ADUs, using rough numbers, that that would set us up for a lot of work for a future fall town meeting TBD.
Correct.
Or spring, I guess, but, you know, who knows how these things will go. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kathy, for your answers.
Yeah, Ms. Britta.
Can I ask one clarification? Kathy, the contractor, is it one contractor with six contracts or six different contractors?
It's six different bids, and the lowest competent contractor gets it.
All right, so talk about future work. There has to be someone that's going to be doing contract management, if you're going to be sitting there with. So that ought to be, you know, something if they.
Sewer commissioners or staff and sewer commissioners?
Exactly, but if the idea comes up that they need to hire someone for the length of the project to do, because that's going to be extremely complex.
Yeah, I'll put in my, I'll put in an application.
That we would, that we would support, we would support maybe, if they wanted to hire someone.
Yep.
That we would support someone to do the contract management for this, because this is going to be substantial. And on the, on the long-term idea of potential zoning, that has already come up. I went to one water resource meeting way back last September, and that issue came up about looking at all the zoning on Route 28 to see what we can do to upgrade it and make it more attractive for economic development. Because now, the town administrator was very pointed in his direction to me. He said, it's very, it's very directed toward housing, you know, because of the motel overlay, motel conversion idea. He said, so, he sort of like shot the arrow and said, get ready, because you're going to have to take a look at that and see what you can do to make it more economically development, more attractive to economic development.
Madam Chair, could I ask one, just one follow-up?
Yes, you may.
Because I noticed we got some correspondence, I think it was two meetings ago, of a memo that the town administrator wrote to the state about the five-year, about the upgraded septic systems.
Right.
Or maybe it was in a select board packet, but I know we were made, it was a public document.
On the promulgation of the regulations.
Right. And, and it relates to the presentation, which is the state's expectation of a five-year satisfaction for an entire town, much less an entire region, much less an entire state. So I guess what I'm saying is, it'll be interesting for us to keep each other notified about what progress, if any, the town is making with the state, as it relates to what Jim was asking about, the watershed permit, much less the other, you know, there might be some people who choose to upgrade their septic system for other reasons, but maybe that time horizon is also something we should be keeping an eye on as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just to speak to what Susan is saying, there might be some things that we do want to look at a little bit earlier. I think right now, a lot of our zoning is meant to incentivize and try and entice somebody to do something, because we don't have necessarily the wastewater, some other aspects to entice people. I know that the VCOD, which was really meant to be mixed use, is very much, the percentage required for mixed use is very low now. It had been higher at one, at one time, so maybe that's something we want to look at. The other thing is, is a lot of our zoning now for architectural and site design standards are advisory, they're not mandatory. So that may be looking at those, those design standards. Those might be something that we can look at before we do a full, a full redo, so to speak, of the zoning bylaw, because I really think that those are the two areas where we're a little lax in the, in the design standards. I think the VCOD is too strict, and I think elsewhere in town, it's probably a little too lax, because it's advisory, it's not mandatory. And then we should probably look at the architectural site design standards themselves, which are a little squishy in some places, and maybe firm some of that up. So that might be something that we could look at earlier to finish answering your question.
Mr. Goodwin, I did not forget about you.
Oh, thank you. I was just, I was thinking about, I just wanted to, I liked the letter. The one thing I'd like to add is just a little bit of, of back in time. Dave Darling was the first person to take advantage of the growth incentive zone when he constructed the Hampton Inn. And he's really happy, as you can see, with the results of his investment. And I think the town is too. I don't think we've had any problem with the Hampton Inn, and there's a good supply of funds coming into the town coffers. Fast forward to when the plot of land next door to one became available, and he bought it. And then he realized that there's no town sewer, but Buzzards Bay does have one. So he shifted his focus there and built another hotel, where Yarmouth is still wanting for another large-scale new property. So when you invest in proper wastewater, you get people like Mr. Darling to put their hard-earned dollars down and build something in your town. So I think it's a good step for Yarmouth on the business side of things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other suggestions or comments for Kathy? How would you like to proceed, Kathy? Do you think you have enough to make some changes?
I think maybe it's just adding a sentence maybe at the end, and just kind of highlighting that, you know, the town of Yarmouth has, has worked very hard to make this as cost-effective to its residents as possible.
I'd be perfectly comfortable with that.
So. Madam Chair, do you need a motion?
I would like.
Or just kind of a?
Yeah. We do, yes.
I think it would be helpful, because then we say that you voted at this meeting to endorse this.
So may I have a motion to have a letter of support written with the edits that we've suggested to Kathy this evening for the wastewater, municipal wastewater program for the town of Yarmouth, to be sent to the Board of Selectmen endorsing the project.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? Take a roll call, Ms. Britta.
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Saban.
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein.
Aye.
And Ms. Crowley, yes. And we'll, we'll just, Kathy will make the changes, and we'll send it. We're comfortable, we don't need to see it again?
It's going to be a memo, right?
Yeah, it'll be a memo.
From the full board.
Yes. Thank you. Next up on our agenda, seasonal employee housing. As we discussed at our last meeting, we received a letter from Patrick Demko, the owner-operator of Parkers River Resort, to the ZBA. He was requesting 100% of his 24 units to be seasonal employee housing for this coming summer season. And we agreed to submit that letter of support, and his petition was acted on favorably by the Board of, the Zoning Board of Appeals last week. There is a second request going before the ZBA next week. And though, although not specifically requested by the petitioner, Joe Moramo, the Chamber of Commerce would welcome a similar letter supporting this petitioner. In discussions I had today with Mary Vilbon, Chamber of Commerce Director, I also asked her if there were any additional requests coming up. This one was not a surprise, but we didn't really know it was coming. And she said no. And I asked her that we'd be, we would deliberate and, and consider support letters, but it would be good if we knew about them in advance. So in addition, she said it is her intention to continue our discussions. Kathy, myself, Jamie Vieira, Mary Vilbon, and Brian, Mark Grills, met in December with the Community Partnership, which came before us about a year ago at this time, to ask us to amend the existing seasonal housing bylaw. And they would like to continue to look at improvements to that, and have asked that we start that, continue those discussions, Kathy. And she will get back to us on that. So Kathy has prepared a draft letter for our consideration this evening regarding the Town and Country Family Resort Motel, also on Route 28. And it's, Mr. Moramo's petition is for 50% of the, of the motel be allocated for, up to 50% be allocated for seasonal employee housing. And as I understand it, that would be 72 units, Kathy, if I have that correct.
They're asking for 72 units. This is, this right here is the Town and Country. This is the CVS, the old 7-Eleven, Dunkin' Donuts. And over here is the inflatable, well, we always refer to as the inflatable park, that Mr. Moramo also owns. But he was planning on having these, this building be, continue to be utilized for guests of the park, and having these two buildings, which are separate and isolated, be utilized for the seasonal employees. He also, one of the thing that I found out today was that this pool here was, will not be opened for the summer. There's a pool inside for the guests indoors. All of this area here is all commercial. This is even courses, like medical offices, undeveloped. So there's really three houses over here that are, that are closest. And I think by closing the pool, you're kind of keeping people away from the, from the residential neighborhood as much as possible. They also have a bunch of other things that have been included in their application, which I included the narrative in your, in your pockets. They're going to be having employees of the Wicked Waves Water Park, which is the applicant, Red Jacket Beach Resort, and also from Dunkin' Donuts. But they've also noted that they, they have been doing this for their own employees for quite some time, and they have done a good job of trying to modify their protocols over time in order to make improvements. So they are the ones that have that onsite private security. They've had that for a while, as well as they incorporated last year a bonus program for their water park employees. So you get your bonus at the end of the month if you've behaved appropriately in the housing that's been provided. They also have in their application a code of conduct that each employee needs to sign that includes things like enforced quiet hours, enlists a clear protocol if you're failure to comply, so what happens to you if you don't comply? They're going to have an onsite live-in manager, as well as that 24/7 security guards and cameras. They also have four kitchens on, on the property that can be utilized in those buildings for them, that will be cleaned daily. And they also have laundry facilities. So they seem fairly well set up for this particular use, especially due to the separation that they have between the buildings.
Any comments? Just, yeah, Mr. Rubenstein.
I'm intrigued. I'm certainly, in general, supportive of it. But I did notice that on, on the second page of the permit application, they did ask for number 11, they're asking for a two-year term in the special permit. And, I mean, I guess it can't hurt to ask, but, I don't know. What I liked about the way we've done, we've approached this over the last 18 months, is that we sort of looked at this on a year-to-year basis. And, and as an example, the previous gentleman, Mr. Demko, who did apply, again, went, did it one year, came back. We had that nice meeting back in the fall, where we all sort of stepped back and looked at it from health and fire and building. And so my only concern is, if we support, if we support this application, this is sort of changing a little bit of the rhythm and the cadence that we had set up. And we haven't even talked, Madam Chair, about whether we were going to do a similar sort of post-game report in September or October. So that's why I wanted to bring it up now, because maybe we talk about that concept, and then that could inform how much we want to support this application as is. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
So that was sort of the thing that stuck out to me. It's not about the need, it's not about the desire, it's not about the.
Different rules, it's different rules, a little bit of different rules.
Okay, well, we can certainly get to that. But I'm sort of stuck on the two-year.
Where do you see the two-year?
It's on number 11 on page two, Susan, so attached to the conditions of the permit application. And thank you very much, Kathy, for attaching that in our packets and for the public. It's paragraph 11. And I can understand the perspective of the, of the business owners wanting to sort of know that everything is set for two years. However, it is a seasonal use. So I'm not really, unless someone can enlighten me, I'm not really sure why you would make that big a swing for the fences when you may not really need to. But there may be other factors and forces that I'm not privy to as to why he would ask, or they would ask for two years. So that's my initial comments, Madam, those are my initial comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I, I'll speak on the reason for the two-year request. It was a comment that I had jotted down on number 11 also. But the reason for it, it's about an eight-month process to bring staffing. Most of the J1s or H2Bs process, it takes about eight months for guaranteed workers to come here to the states. So from the time you start it, so I, you know, I'll be candid with you, because I'm very familiar with the property. I'm actually very familiar with the use of it, because at one time, I had employees that worked for me at this particular property. And so, you know, as far as the application process, I think he does a great, has done a great job with it. I am supportive of that, but I also do have a concern of the two-year ask, for the simple reason, I understand why he's doing it, but I do think it's something outside of what we've done here in the past. And, you know, my thought is, I'd be in favor, but I'd be in favor for a one-year process.
Yeah, Mr. Goodwin.
I was, I was probably one step behind Mr. Smith, because I have clients that try to book H2Bs and J2s coming over for more than one year. So I think that's why they're asking for the ask. Boy, use the word "ask" twice in one sentence, that's a good use, way to go. But I, I'm kind of in favor of it. I don't want to see this person stopped because someone gets angry and they want only one year. But if you give him or her two years, I think it would be beneficial for the recruitment of employees, the State Department, the local officials, and all that.
Mr. Smith.
Madam Chair, can I just touch on that? And Brad, just, you cannot get an H2B or a J1 visa for more than, you can have it in the cycle for a second year, but it's only a one-year application, so.
I, I agree, but you know, and I know, that a lot of our, well, I'll say clients, a lot of your people that you know, and my clients, get the same people back each year. So I'm hoping that with the two-year, at least, they'll have a place to put them heads in beds, instead of going and hoping for one year and then maybe having it fall apart.
Ms. Britta.
If that were the case, why didn't Demko ask for two years? If he, if that was going to be a problem, then why would, why, did he only ask for one, and this guy's asking for two?
Kathy?
And also, for consistency's sake, for administration and consistency's sake, we've already set the precedent for one. It's really hard to say, with the fellow last week, the pack of, you only can do it for one year, but the water park can do it for two. It's hard to administer, it's hard to explain. Someone might commit to taking one for 10 years, then what do we do? So we've, we said one, it gives the ability, and I also think, you know, at the end of the year, it gives you the ability to go back and refresh, put in new ideas, take things out that you, that didn't work, put things in that did work or work better. It gives the applicant, as well as the board, the ability to make, make additional comments. Remember, at one time, there was a concept, they were going to put a sunset provision in that, and they, no, let's leave it at the special permit, and that gives us the ability to go back anyway. So that's how they retained the ability to go back and take a look at it. So two years might make, might be good for the water park guy, but I don't think from an administrative and a town point of view, it's the best, particularly since we've already given one fellow one year.
Yeah, Kathy.
I think this might be a case where, for consistency, we say one year, but say that, you know, we're going to be looking at this again in the fall. And I know one of the things that, or for the fall, one of the things that the chamber is interested in is having it be more than one year. I know that Mr. Demko would have liked to have it more than one year. And maybe they need to get their applications in earlier in the season than February and March. But I think if, if you have these two places that have a year or two under their belts, and we have some modifications in the bylaw that says you could allow up to two years, that might help ease things into it in the future.
I'd just like to comment on that for just one second. That's exactly the conversation I had with the Chamber Director, Mary Vilbon, today, that the Community Partnership is working towards getting together a draft for us to review on suggested changes. And the one thing she mentioned in particular was having it more than one year. There wasn't a notion of how many years, but possibly two. There wasn't a notion of how many years, but possibly two, possibly three. But that was where the community partnership wants to work with us to maybe perhaps make some additional modifications. Mr. Saban.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this not the third application of this sort? Did one not get denied for various reasons?
I believe it was withdrawn without prejudice, but would have been denied.
So there have been three of these? And, and the main reason for them having to come back is, and ask for greater is because of the 15% number? So, so am I understanding that there's discussions outside of this body about coming back and modifying this bylaw to maybe increase that number, so that in the...
That is one of the things they have mentioned in the past. There's been no number specifically mentioned, but it is one thing that they did mention at our meeting with the Building Commissioner and Kathy back in late December.
Because clearly, it's, I mean, we're going to be doing this every year if we don't try to figure out what that magic number is. I'm, I'm fine with one year, and the reason why I am is because of the situation where we had one experience that was apparently not good, and another that was good, and another one that was kind of operating without knowledge. So I don't have a lot of track record as to how successful this is by saying yea or nates or these, with the exception of the ones that we have. And it's kind of a 50/50, you know, thing. So for that reason, I want to be able to have the opportunity to have them come back again next year. So if they don't do it right this year, we got a chance to correct it the next year by saying no. Versus if they don't do it right this year, you got two years to wait to have another discussion. So again, I think the one year is a very doable thing, it's precedent. But the other thing is clearly we need to put this on our agenda to, so that we're not having these discussions. And the last part of what I want to say is, in my past life, and maybe Brad can enlighten me, but I don't recall the planning board constantly being asked to write letters of support for projects within the community. It's just, so I don't know if this is something new, or was I asleep at the wheel, you know, 20 years ago? But it just doesn't seem to be something that we've been asked to do an awful lot in the last couple of meetings, you know? Support for wastewater, support for this project, support for that project. I don't know if that's within, I don't know, I guess I'm just thinking out loud, but is that typically what we do?
I think we'll ask that question of Brad. The last time we did this in Brad.
I asked Brad the same question. What was your answer, Brad? Do you remember?
We don't, we don't, in my recollection, the letter writing in support has been picking up.
I will offer that on the committees that I've served on with the new town administrator and the assistant town administrator, this appears to be a model that they find to be helpful in terms of getting official support for projects that they can, that they can publicly announce that X committee, Y committee, Z committee is, is in favor. CEDC has some regulatory requirements of letters of support, as you know. These are merely, these are not regulatory at all, but this seems to be a new, a new way of doing business.
Can I just, only Kathy?
Elaborate on that? I think there was some concern after the Village Green proposal was viewed so negatively by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that had extensive, I think there was 26 opposition letters that were sent with pictures and examples, and the room was completely filled with people who had some serious issues with that particular property, with how that was being maintained and how that was being operated. So when we met with the chamber, there was concerns, well, should we even apply? What are we going to do for this season? And they were concerned that the Zoning Board of Appeals would feel like, would shut everybody down after that. So that's why they were asking for some support for this summer season, understanding that we were going to start looking at the, making changes potentially to the bylaw in the fall to kind of tweak some of this, to give a little bit more support or guidance to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I feel like they don't, the implication might be that they don't feel like they have enough guidance, and it's a little arbitrary for them to be making some of these decisions. So I think that's why we're looking at support letters for this particular topic on this particular summer season.
But that's not what the application says. The application wants approval for not just this season, but they also want approval for next season.
And we can offer our recommendation for one year.
Sorry, Jim, I know you wanted to finish.
No, no, that's good. Just, I guess a couple of quick things. They're asking us for a letter of recommendation. Do we have any historical information about this property? I think I just heard somebody say, he's been doing this in the past.
He's done it with his own employees, and he was, he was part of the memo from the fall review. They basically had 66 rooms rented last year with three people per bedroom. They did have a couple noise complaints from the police, and that he immediately responded to with that bonus program, and that kind of settled everybody down. And then they had a few issues after the, they, most people typically leave in September. Most of his, his workers are J-1 workers. But there were a few people that were still there after the, the security guard had been let go after, after Labor Day, and they had a few issues there. But they have a lot of experience, they have a lot of protocols in place, they already have the kitchens there, they have the laundry there, and they have the, they have that 24/7 before. I think it was just nighttime security. Now they're proposing 24/7 security, as well as having cameras.
And my, if I can, just my last question, do we know, I'm sure we do, I just don't recall, what was the percentage or number that the previous letter that we supported, was that also a 50%?
It was 100%, but it was only 24.
This was for 100% of that entire, which was how many units, do we know?
24.
Was 24. And this is to convert to 50% or 72? I'm fine with that. I'm indifferent to giving a letter of support. I don't know enough of the details about this property, except for what you've told me. So the bonus only applies to the people that work at the waterworks. What about the other people that work there? Will it work with them who aren't getting a bonus? If the security is leaving and we're having a problems, how long is security going to leave? So those are questions, I don't know. I love the idea of doing this. I'm just not comfortable giving a letter of support when I have too many unknowns. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm not encouraged to give a letter of support.
Could we use, could we use another word besides support? The planning board favorably views or believes past, passed on, you know, based on the two experiences we've had, that this is an application that deserves serious consideration? Something like that? And tied to our past experience with Parkers, what's it, what's it called?
Parkers River Resort.
I mean, I like the direction you're going in, Susan, except that I'm still hung up on the two-year part.
Oh, I think, I think...
So we'll get, as long as we can still tackle...
I think it's one year.
Right, so it feels like there needs to be a new sentence or some addition to an existing sentence or sentences in here that says, in a one-year approval.
Right, right, definitely support the one year.
Because it sounds like we're heading back, if I heard you correctly, Madam Chair, it sounds like we're heading to a postseason, meaning September or October, set of conversations like we had last year, not just to review how it went, quote unquote, but to also talk about potential additions and/or changes to the bylaw.
Again, this is part of the conversation that we will be having with the Chamber of Commerce and, in particular, the Community Partnership, which is that group of, a subset of the chamber. They have asked us along the way to collaborate with them and help them move in this direction on this pretty urgent issue of seasonal workforce housing. There is some knowledge about the reputation of Mr. Morama that is well-known in the community by me, through my conversations, through the chamber and others. And the, the idea that we would collaborate and support his petition, I think, would be viewed very favorably by the chamber and show our good faith in looking to address this problem. Mr. Smith.
Madam Chair, just to, just to continue to add on the conversation that Kathy touched on, you know, Mr. Menara, what I will tell you is, every issue that he has had, because as I said, I had firsthand knowledge of this property. He had responded to, I'm glad to hear that he is close to the pool this year, and he's not going to have the pool operational, which will keep people away from the back part of the property. But, you know, the camera systems, the security guard, all this stuff has been add-ons that he has done from when he started using this property for his own employees.
Years ago.
Years ago, and building out from there. So I'm in support of the property being used at 50% on a one-year, and that'd be, that'd be my comment to it.
Ms. Britta.
And this is, this is, I'm fine with it. I think we should do one year, I think we should support. I just want to bring up one sort of public safety issue. Demko, with his employees, remember they were fed right down at the Red Jacket, so there was no cooking in the, in the units, which was, which was a huge plus. These kids are going to be cooking in the unit, and I just want to remind, because I go to Dunkin' Donuts almost every single day, kids walking across 28 to get to the dollar store to buy food.
But I thought there, oh, you, yeah, there's four kitchens, they're not each individual...
Yeah, right, right, but they'll be able to cook there. See, they have, down at Parkers River, whatever the place was, they didn't cook, they were fed on-site, which was a huge plus. So the owner didn't have to worry about fires and stuff like that. During the summer, you see kids walking across 28 all the time to get to the dollar store. And you'll have cars going west, racing to get through the light, and it can be dangerous. Compounding that, there's a bus stop right at the Dunkin' Donuts exit. So sometimes the bus stops, kids walk in front of that bus to get across the street, and cars try to get around the bus. It can be very dangerous. So in your, I would recommend in your conversations with the chamber that, that the owner really heightened with his kids, be very careful crossing 28, especially at night. I've seen them all the time, because they, they're going to be able to cook, and they'll be going over there to buy stuff to cook back in their units. And it can be very, very dangerous. It's just, you know, we don't want to see an accident on Route 28 that's, especially during the season. And I think with some heightened, say, the kids, they don't walk down to the corner, which of course is only like, you know, 100 yards away, and cross at the intersection and come back on the other side. They don't do that, they run across the street. And you see cars oblivious, they're racing to get to the light, and we don't want to see an accident there. So it can be, and it's compounded with that bus stop. So because the bus stops and the cars, they try to get on the bus to get up to the light, and the kids have cut right in front of the bus.
Madam Chair, one last thing on it, is, just so everybody knows, the Red Jacket is, has purchased a bus to move their staff to and from, a small shuttle van, whatever you want to call it. And they will have a commissary kitchen for their staff. So I don't anticipate much cooking at this property for the Red Jacket staff. I don't know how many that will, that will be, but I do know that's, they're going to continue their policies that they had last year.
On-site.
Getting them on-site.
And I think that was a huge plus. I think that was a massive, and also the transportation. So the kids weren't driving around all the time. I thought those two things were, and the bilingual, the bilingual manager on-site. I think those three things were really very helpful to control the activity.
Any other comments or questions, concerns?
I guess I would just like to say that whenever town staff has ever had any issues with Joe Morama, he's been extremely responsive. He's one of the easier business owners to work with, in the sense that you don't get a lot of pushback. It's like, oh, what can I do? And I also know that he is also very much involved with his neighbors around the, around the water park. I'm not as familiar with this particular property, but around the water park over the years, trying to do various things in order to make them, make them happy. And I think he gives out, like, annual passes for the grandkids and different types of things in order to try and be a good neighbor. So I think he, I do feel he has experience with being a good neighbor, based on town staff experience.
Any other comments? We should have a motion on the letter, Kathy?
Can I just maybe talk a little bit about some of the amendments that it sounds like you're, you're interested in talking about? Let me just... Because it sounds like a couple of the things that, in that second paragraph about, you know, in the application, they've done some of these things. Maybe we want to include that we favor the closure of the outdoor pool located closest to the residential neighbors, the use of that shuttle bus. And I don't know whether you wanted to add anything about, would recommend that the owner educate their employees about safety? I don't know.
Well, I don't know if you have to put that in the letter, but I think it's certainly something that should be mentioned.
So maybe...
Not in, no, no, I don't think the board should be saying that. I think you should tell through the chamber, this came up, and just beware.
That makes sense.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, I think that's more appropriate, I agree, Susan.
As a side to that, and oh, by the way, I have been the president of the chamber for two years, so I'm quite familiar with the operations and, and again, it's just, I don't know this particular property. I'm very in favor of this project. The chamber has a project where they actually talk to the kids about bicycle safety, et cetera. So I'm sure that they can probably include that into their...
Perfect.
When they bring the J-1s, they always have a, like a welcome program that they do every year that the chamber really does.
They give them vests?
Yeah, they do all kinds of...
I think they outfit them.
And backpacks.
So the chamber's got that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Saban.
You already have the program.
I'm sorry, Kathy, continue?
So I guess maybe I would just add in that sex, at the end here, that end of the second paragraph, just the closure of the pool, the use of the shuttle vans. And then I guess it depends on how you want to, when we're looking at that third paragraph, does the planning board supports the petition or special permit application for one year?
Yeah, and I would make that a sentence, and I would put a period. And then, and then we can talk about the rest of that paragraph.
I see, okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Well, I think Jim had a concern about the word "support."
Okay, right.
Were we going to say favorably "view" or something like that?
We can talk about that in one second. I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with the one-year.
Yeah.
It sounds like we all are.
Yeah, we are, we've reached, so we're good on the one-year.
Okay, sorry, so Susan, if you want to talk more about the actual verb...
Favorably "view" or the board...
Madam Chair, I'm okay with the word "support."
Yeah. I am as well, Mr. Rubenstein.
I am. I don't know, I don't know if Mr. Saban or Mr. Goodwin...
I'm with Jim, I think "support" is too strong.
I'm all about building consensus. If "support" is the word that everybody else wants, then I'm okay, I'm not going to lose sleep over it. I would, you know, recommend that the zoning board view favorably upon the request is probably another way of saying it, but...
Yeah. What did we use before? What did we say with the Parkers River?
We used "support."
Support.
And you struck "favorably "view."
We did.
You struck it. It was in the last one.
Right.
There it is.
I thought it was too strong.
There you go.
There you go. I'm good with "support," Madam Chair.
I thought "support" was a diminishment.
We're back where we started.
I rest my case.
So...
Also, wasn't that the sentence that had, and we urge you to vote X, Y, and Z, which I abducted to?
Urgently, so we took out urgently and favorably "view," and we dropped to support. So I think "support" might be the lowest common denominator here.
I'm okay with it.
All right. Susan, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, good. "Support."
Do we need a vote if there's any contention, or is this the consensus?
No, no, we're all okay.
Because we're not changing it.
So I'm just going to add those two other things about the pool and the shuttle, and I'm going to change that sentence to for one year, make it the full sentence, period, and then say, the board all believes, blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you. We didn't ask you, Kathy, if there were any other specific adjustments you wanted to suggest on this, was it?
Just the pool and the shuttle.
Okay, good. Okay. Next. Accessory apartment by law.
Yes.
At our last meeting, we, we passed a motion to defer the accessory apartment zoning amendment to the 2023 special town meeting, we, to provide more information from town council and to develop a plan for more comprehensive public engagement. So there's still some work to be finished here. Kathy, can you give us an update on where we are with town council and some of the data points we've requested? And then I'd just like to open it up for discussion on possible calendar, on, on how we approach our public outreach.
Town council is still looking at that language. Once I told him that it was deferred to a fall town meeting, I think he kind of deferred it a little bit himself. But I did tell him I still wanted to have him look at that, but we, that I didn't need it for this meeting. I did have a meeting with the assessors and Bruce Barrow from the GIS. It's, it's interesting, the different assessing codes. I learned a little bit about assessing codes. And I think we might have had included some, some things in the previous that we don't want to include. And we also want to be sure that I think we're catching vacant residential properties that could potentially be done. So, I got a new, a new spreadsheet from the assessors department. I'm filling in some data, but then I'm also working with Mary Wagan to back out the ineligible things, like the affordable single-family homes, and then the single-family homes and the comprehensive permit developments. So, once I get that, then I can provide that spreadsheet to Bruce, and I think it should be relatively easy for him to develop, develop the mapping. Assessors wasn't necessarily developed for what we wanted to do, so it's not going to be perfect. Some of those vacant lands we might show as being potential may not be buildable. We can't get to that level of it. But I think most of the things I was looking at, most of them seem to be at least assessed at, as though they were buildable. So, we are, we are working on that. So, I would, I don't know if you want to.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I think maybe what we need to do is get that information together, as well as the edits from, from town council. Have one, two more meetings or whatever with the, with the board, so that you guys come to what you think we should be presenting to the public as the starting point for this public engagement. I think you guys are fairly close. I think the majority has a consensus, the vast majority has a consensus. And I understand that, you know, a lot of the things that Susan's brought up will probably be talking points as part of these, these public outreach programs that, that we're doing. I think maybe it's kind of, you know, once we have that, that defined, maybe we have a, you know, a listening session number two, kind of going through point by point, like we did before, and allowing the public to speak after each particular point. Doing some education in the beginning, kind of explaining to people what ADUs are, accessory apartments, and all of that stuff. But then kind of say, this is where the planning board landed, and see if we have, get individual public comments. I think, obviously, the biggest one will probably be that whole special permit by right question that, that's come up. And I think, you know, Joanne and I were talking, she had a great idea of maybe having three, three sessions. One that's located in Yarmouth Port, one that's located in South Yarmouth, and one that's located in West Yarmouth, similar to what was done for the RAC meetings, for the public outreach, for that, so that we can kind of get a briefing session. And be good maybe to try and identify those dates as soon as possible, so that we can start making sure that, we can market it appropriately and make sure that people are fully understand. We'll have to develop a landing page on the town website, once we get our final version, and then start, and start promoting that. And maybe have, it would be great if we could get somebody in the paper to say something. I haven't had a lot of luck getting a Yarmouth-based article, or even a press release. Sometimes they, they don't even do press releases for us. I know we send them to them, but I don't know whether they're, I've never seen them in the paper.
Well, circulation's dropped to twenty-eight thousand, so I wouldn't really sweat it.
Yeah. Radios are good.
We've done a couple stories, but I'm, I'm suggesting, how about July fourth weekend, Labor Day, and let's see Memorial Day weekend for holding ours?
Madam Chair.
What kind of turnout we get?
Mr. Rubenstein.
Since we're talking about dates, could you, could you give us an end date that you think we'd have to? In other words, when would the official public hearing have to be in, I'm just going to say, the fall?
Yeah.
In order to make a typical special town meeting? Could we, it would just help my brain, so I can understand, like, where are we working back from? Because it sounds like it's going to be a couple of weeks. I'm just using that vague, in vague air quotes, to get some of this initial information that, or to get, to finalize or a couple of meetings, which could really mean four weeks. So, I'm just trying to understand what the endpoint is, so we can work backwards.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, right, exactly when they're going to have special town meeting. But say they have it at the end of October, you know, we were.
Isn't that around the time they do it, before Halloween?
Yes.
Typically, yes. It was only changed last year because I think of voting and that type of thing.
But that's not the case this year, because it's a non-election.
Not to my, yes, my understanding is it probably will be either the, the last or second to the last Tuesday in, in October. So, I think we should have our, our hearing, the first or second, at the latest in September. That's assuming that we feel good about it, that we're not, don't feel as though we're going to be getting a lot of, of public comment in, in the public hearing portion, because we've already done the work ahead of time. So, to advertise that, you'd want to be, we want to be pretty solid with what we're presenting by mid-August. So, you know.
So, now we're talking four and a half months, no, five, five-ish months. But that's really not from today, because we're still not really where we need to be.
Correct.
So, real, then it's four months, and you want to have three meetings.
Yes.
Okay. It's starting to come together, I think.
Yeah, when Kathy, well, when Kathy and I talked about it, I, I think we're, we were thinking of perhaps the meetings in June and.
End of May, June.
May, not running into the July fourth weekend, or that period of. July is just a, a busy month.
Right.
Overall, so.
You mean all three meetings in the late May, early June?
In three, we would have three public meetings that wouldn't be here.
Oh, okay.
You might want to have one here for South Yarmouth. The only reason I say that is because then Dave can record it, and it can be available.
Okay, yeah, no, good.
And we can actually do remote participation, because some of the other places, it's not possible with remote participation.
Well, we're in South Yarmouth, so this could count as the South Yarmouth zip code.
What was the West Yarmouth one used for RAC?
We went to the real estate, the real estate office.
Okay, that might be a great opportunity.
Yeah, that would be a really good place, I think. So, we use the Cape Cod real estate. And then, for Yarmouth Port, we were at the fire station, and that room had enough capacity. And it was a good location. So, that's where I'd recommend locations. It seemed to work for, for RAC. The senior center was the other one.
Oh, yeah.
That we, we used for RAC, and, and that's available at night as well, so.
So, if I heard you correctly, then, Madam Chair, you're, you're pointing towards having these three sessions sometime, let's just say roughly, between May fifteenth and July first?
Yeah, that's a good boundary.
Somewhere in there, okay.
Like a week apart, maybe?
Yeah, of course. And I, but I'm just, again, just trying to see, because we're at March first.
People can come to any of them that they want, they don't have to come to their area, but.
And then, and then assuming we get, so by the July fourth weekend, those three meetings will have happened, hopefully.
Yeah.
And then that allows this group to then have our regularly scheduled meetings in July and/or the first of August, if necessary. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to think this out loud, because, again, we want public engagement, so I'm trying to give this timeline, so that folks can see where this is headed. So, it does allow us some time on the back end to come back together in this group, in this room, and under these rules, to have those conversations about how those three meetings went.
And see if you want to make any amendments before it goes to the formal public hearing.
Which still gives us time for mid-August.
Mr. Saban.
Thank you, Ms. Ben, Chair.
If we do that.
Do what I just said?
What, what my colleague has just suggested. I fear that the same people that are suggesting, now that we delay, because, you know, we're talking about this in the middle of the winter, their whole argument is we should have it in the fall, so that they could be here to argue, and so they could stand up at town meeting and be heard. Well, if we have all of our meetings in the spring, and we're not doing anything in August and September, I fear that somebody's going to stand up and say, "You did this in the spring and in the summer, and didn't get a chance to talk about it in the fall." I mean, it's a lame excuse to begin with, that they, that it even gets us to this point, in my opinion, but we are. As far as I'm concerned, the bylaw we have is, is ready to go. We'll do these to appease the public and to, to do whatever we need to do. But I also need to, to say that this is kind of setting a precedence. We have another set of issues that we'll be discussing in our future that will also have controversy, if you will. So, this might be a chance for us to put a boilerplate as to how we approach these controversial issues in the future, so that we're not saying, "Hey, you didn't talk about it enough to us." So, in some of these other issues that we've got coming up, we might think about this in the future as to how we, we satisfy that, "Hey, we haven't talked about it enough" argument. What is enough? To me, I think we've already talked enough, but clearly, there's people that think we need to talk more. So, I want to, I'm, I'm okay with all that. But I don't want to get to the fall and have people say, "Well, you talked about it in the spring, and all summer long, we had no chance to hear about it." So.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Can I ask a quick follow-up?
And I think we, we even mentioned at our, at our last meeting, we made very clear that, that's not the direction we're going in, that we do not intend to, to move this anywhere beyond special town meeting in the fall. Mr. Rubenstein?
Quick follow-up. So, as it relates to the conversation we just had previously in the agenda about amending the seasonal housing law, by law.
Yes.
Is that a similar timetable?
Yeah, it is.
So, in other words, will we have a public hearing in August that would be, that have two subjects on the agenda?
Oh, sure.
Right, that would have both of these on the agenda, so that we would, I'm just, I'm just, again, I'm just setting ourselves up for where we're headed, which sounds like lots of public engagement. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Appreciate that. Mr. Smith, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I did, but we'll just answer it for me by, by clarifying the timetable.
So, we'll probably have a couple of things going, at, at least. So, is, is that enough to work with?
Yeah.
Kathy, in terms of kind of, Kathy had also shared with me today an idea that we used for visioning, where at-town meeting, we had postcards that we handed out, that had dates, times, places. And so, it's kind of a captured audience there, hopefully several hundred people from all around town. And it seemed to be a good catch point, if you will, where we could start the process in April and get people thinking about it, and, and being able to lock in on some times, dates, and places.
Madam Chair, I will volunteer, right here, right now, to stand outside of town meeting and hand out those postcards.
Be sure to say, "It's not on this annual town meeting."
You should also say that on the postcard. If it doesn't, then the postcard will be, the postcard will not be printed without that clarification.
You won't pass them out.
No, but I would like to help. Because I agree, it's a great idea, it's a great, great time to do it. But if they, if they are just merely on a table, that will not increase the efficacy.
Kathy was very handy.
Well, I didn't know who else was ready to step in, so I'm happy to do it. Long as it's not raining.
Hundred and fifty of the vision plans, one, would you like, would you like a Yarmouth vision plan? Would you like, I gave out a ton of them, and people were happy to take one.
We also had them virtually every town, every board meeting, whether it was zoning or planning, there was the vision statement was always on the table, so the people, there was a good opportunity.
Great idea.
Okay. Any other, any other comments? Okay. So, I think we've got a little bit of groundwork covered there, Kathy, which is good. And then, let's move to the next item on the agenda. The Blue Sky Tower, three communications tower. In our packets is the latest proposal regarding the zoning board of appeals petition, numbered five thousand five, for a one-hundred-and-ten-foot-tall communication tower, proposed for one-zero-four-four Route twenty-eight. The assessor's map, fifty parcel one-eighty-nine-point-one. This is on their agenda for March ninth, next week. We've been at this since 2021 with the Cape Cod Commission. In your packets were several letters that the board worked on and sent to the Cape Cod Commission with regard to our concerns for this tower. It is now before the zoning board of appeals next week. And we would like very much to be able to comment directly to the zoning board of appeals on this. Kathy sent us a note yesterday, and highlighting four points that she thought we might want to consider. And I'm going to ask Kathy to walk through, first of all, what their plan is, because it's different than what we've seen before, and then walk us through your suggested inputs for the note to ZBA.
I don't have this up, and I can pull it up if you want. I do have the renderings from when it was the monopole with the exposed towers. They started at a hundred and twenty feet, they ended up through the DRI process, getting down to a hundred and ten feet, pulling the antennas closer and, and making them a little bit tighter. And that was basically the concession for that. When it went through design review, and I think you remember some of your comments also, were, was there a better way that we could camouflage this? In addition to, what other sites? Because we didn't like the site. It really had a lot of impacts to all of the positive things we're trying to do on Route, on Route twenty-eight. Could it go in a different, different location? And if it couldn't go in a different location, then what could be done to camouflage it or make it look a little bit different? They came before the design review committee with a very rudimentary clock. And then they had, actually, they came, I think, initially with them with just the monopole, and then they came back to them with the clock. And then they came back to, to site plan review with the same kind of half-done clock. And I indicated to them that I didn't think that that was going to fly at ZBA, that if they really want to try to camouflage it, they should do a little bit more and make it look like a better clock. Here's the, here's the problem. Do you have something that's a monopole at a hundred and ten feet tall that has antennas on it that people kind of will, is small, narrow, thin, that people might visually stop looking at? Because they're used to seeing these all, all up and down. Or do you make it something that people might actually want to look at? But this is going to be significantly larger. And because it's so tall, how does it, it, it doesn't even necessarily, can't even really pretend to be a clock at, at that particular height. But I think this looks better than what they presented to design review and to site plan review. And I do give them credit for trying to, to do something to, with it. I would point out that actually, when you get to the peak of the, of the roof on there, it's actually a hundred and fifteen.
It's already tall.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually taller, because they didn't bring it down for, for the roof. So, one of the things that they had, they did the balloon test on February eleventh, and just on February twenty-eighth, they provided the renderings. I sent to you guys the link for that, but we can take a look at them here and get a, a better idea what they look like. What you're seeing here, and it's kind of important, is anything that's green, these different sites that are green are basically saying, these are the photo locations where the balloon was visible. And then the yellow is where it's visible but obscured in some way, and red is kind of where it's, it's not visible at all. And they had four packets of these particular renderings for people to take a look at. A lot of them, as you can see in red, they're really, 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 really far away, and of course, you can't see it. But they did give a wide range. So, this is actually, obviously, from the parking lot, kind of in front of the old Radio Shack across Forest Road. And I believe that that should be, that, that red flag at the top should be the hundred and fifteen. And that's what it would look like. They have to unfortunately angle, this was the other thing. I'm like, well, can you angle it so people could actually see the clock when you're driving down the street? And they're like, no, you can't, because they need them to face certain directions. So, that was, and, and I say, could you make it for, a four, you know, four-sided? And they're like, no, you can't do four-sided, because you have to be directing the device, the antennas in the right direction. This is all right, this is stuff I don't know anything about. So, all of these things were asked, and this is, this was the answer. This is kind of across the street from Tally's Pizza on the other side, west of the site. It's over, and these are the trees that would be, are in the fall zone. You know, maybe we want to start talking about making sure that they have some control over the fall zone. Right now, I don't think they do, so that they're not removing all of these trees that they're relying upon for some type of screening.
Those trees are not being, are not being removed, right?
These trees are not being removed, yeah.
Maybe some clearance on the church side, though?
Yes. I mean, I mean, honestly, I think you might, no, they didn't do it. Sometimes they've actually removed some trees. But yeah, any of the trees that would be in front on this side and on the Route twenty-eight.
Kathy, they added the very small trees.
Yes, you got it.
That they are put on the plan. If you just toggle back and forth, just for like, maybe twice more, and you'll notice that they are there. And then, see, they added these little shrubs. I was at my computer earlier today, like, toggling back and forth, just having a little.
That's, that's the landscaping they have at the bottom that's hiding, the fence that hides the ground equipment. So, that's that. So, you can kind of see it. I'm not exactly sure where this, this one is. Must, oh, I think this is on Long Pond, looking back, and you can kind of see it. And this is down Forest Road, heading towards Willow or Old Main. And you can kind of see it, it's kind of hidden behind this tree, because of the angle of the shot that they picked.
Long may that tree live.
You can barely see it, the tree's there. And this is in the parking lot, probably in front of job lots. Oh, no, you're right, Shaw's, it's that far down.
That could be the Citizens Bank.
That is, that's Shaw's parking lot.
Shaw's, because here's, here's the job lots over here, yeah, you're right.
Where is it?
Right here.
Little.
Well, that's the Piccadilly. Whoa.
Oh, there it is.
Can you toggle that one more time?
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I think, oh, you can see, you can kind of see that one a little bit in the background, right here.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Can I ask Kathy a question?
Sure.
Kathy, you made the comment when you started the presentation that they couldn't locate this tower anywhere else but this particular spot. I wasn't part of these meetings previous.
That's what they said.
So that, that's where I'm looking for some clarification, is, says who, them? I mean, they're trying to get, T-Mobile's trying to get cell phone coverage in the mid-Cape area. It can't go on White's Path in an industrial-zoned area where there already is radio towers or somewhere else? Says them, or just no, because no?
I, I think that in the, in the, I didn't.
I think this is a horrible spot for it.
They're looking, they're looking to have coverage on that part of Route 28, Ken. They even looked at using the WXDK tower that we own over on South Sea Ave, and that still didn't give them enough coverage into the area they wanted. So the tower and the bays are there to supply needed coverage to that area of Yarmouth. And we did look, Mr. Barron brought up a couple of other locations. And I think if I remember right, we had responses back that those homeowners or business owners didn't want to give them a lease. This church obviously didn't want the money.
There, there were, and this goes back to my time on CEDC, where the, the requests to different property owners went out certified. And for some, they responded back and said, not interested. For others, there was simply no response. And so therefore, there was no pursuit by them of these other legitimate locations that could have satisfied the, the need for their frequency and their coverage. And this has been raised several times with the Cape Cod Commission. Kathy and I both raised it on their diligence, really due diligence in pursuing all possible alternate locations. In, in my personal opinion, having seen it and been through it with the Cape Cod Commission, they failed miserably. They picked the site where the diocese of Fall River was willing to give them a lease. And they've had this lease for years, years. No, no, the, the petitioner.
Tower company.
Tower company.
Tower company.
Blue Sky.
Because it's AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, both are, I'm sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
It's a tow, it's being pursued by the tower building company.
By Blue Sky, right.
By Blue Sky, so they build, what do they build? They build towers. They don't build concealed antenna monopoles. They don't do the little toppers that go on top of utility poles. They build towers. And then, of course, you know, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T are like, yeah, sure, I'll run some gap coverage maps for you, and you do all the work and do all the expense in order to, to get this built, and I'd be happy to put my antennas on, on that tower that you have. I, I think the one thing that, that, a couple of things that were discussed during the DRI that might not have necessarily gotten fully vetted was looking at not one other alternative, but looking at a combination of collective of different types of options. I know that they said, well, look at the, at the radio station. So they just looked at the radio station, they didn't put a lower-level tower here and the radio station. Or they didn't have like a cam over here and then have the toppers elsewhere, because they don't do those things. They wanted to build this particular tower. I think that something like, you know, what we're looking at would look very different if it wasn't 115 feet into the air. I mean, you can't even pretend you're a clock at 115 feet in the air, we're just trying to make it.
It would look different if it was 115 feet in the air and three-sided.
Yeah, it's an 11-story building.
Yeah.
Oh, that's an interesting way, it is an 11-story building.
Yeah.
How tall is the hospital tower?
Four, not 11 stories.
Even the new one.
Seven stories.
He's in the new one, I think it's only six or seven. But I'm just giving, just to continue the context, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And you're right, Mr. Smith, it was very disappointing, this process.
Kathy, can you go back to the schematic that was A4? As I read this, and maybe, Mr. Goodwin, you can help me with this. When I see the letters RF Equipment, I presume that's radio frequency equipment, is that what that means?
Yep.
And if I'm looking at this correctly, there are five sort of enclosed panel areas at the top of the tower. And the first one looks like it's probably just decorative, as is the second one. But the third one, where the clock is, which I guess would be about 20 or 25 feet shorter, actually has RF equipment by others. So I guess that would be future?
Yeah, they, they, they got permitted from the Cape Cod Commission for four. So there's the T-Mobile at the top, AT&amp;T the second, and then a third and a fourth. I think they just put in the, the panels on the lower one, I don't know whether they're thinking of a fifth one or something.
It's actually written vertically.
On side, on the side, so.
Vertically by others as well.
Right, so.
69 feet at that second panel, Madam Chair.
Right.
Right, so I think the lower panel is aesthetics.
So they got approval for four carriers, okay. And we know of two of them now.
Correct.
But again, as we talked about in December of 2021, frequencies work on height and gain, and so you need height to get reach and gain across the topography. And luckily, we don't have mountains on Cape Cod, or you have to be even higher. And I, I go back to what Kathy said at the beginning of the meeting, and it makes good sense. Again, we sold our property on South Sea Ave, and the tower's still there, and somebody still built $2 million mansions. So people don't mind living near or under a tower. And two, as Kathy said, those towers on White's Path, people drive by, don't even look at anymore. And they've been up since, oh my goodness, early 90s. At least when the, the second radio station went up at 93.5 FM, and they got permission to build a tower there right off of White's Path, the exit 8. I don't hear anybody complaining today. It's sort of like the 99 that went in. People jumped up and down, wanted to burn it at the stake, now that it's there, no problems.
Mr. Smith?
Right, how far back from White's Path roadway is those two towers? How's that tower on White's Path? Because I'd say it's a good 150 feet.
I try by it every day.
I, I don't know, I've never measured, I've measured, I'm sorry, maybe Mr. Saban would know.
That seems about right, I mean, my office is on White's Path, it seems to be that far, I can Google Earth it.
What was the question? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
How far back is the tower?
Of the existing tower.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
I think the, I'm sorry, Mr. Saban.
Nearly as close as what this is.
And, and that's my.
Major thoroughfare.
That's my concern.
Most major of thoroughfares, sorry.
And Madam Chair, just for clarification, at 119 feet 5 inches, it's actually 12-story style.
Thank you. Again, the, the, the position of the board previously, when we communicated with the Cape Cod Commission, was its location, and the way it looked. This is a completely different look, I'm not sure if this look is better or worse. Maybe a, a thing that looked like a radio antenna tower, you might drive by and not think about it. But this is, this is going to draw your eye to it, in my opinion, even more so than perhaps a, a more industrial look from an antenna. But again, our, our chore here, and, you know, our timeframe is difficult, because it is next Thursday, is to have. I would like very much for the Planning Board to be able to submit a statement to the Zoning Board of Appeals on our position for this, on this particular petition. And to reiterate what we have said before, we have at least three formal, four letters relating to the DRI on our position in the past. I, I don't think our position has changed. Some members, this was not a unanimous opinion, there were members of the board who disagreed. But the consensus of the board is represented in these, in these letters. So the, the charge for us this evening is, one, would we like to have a position stated and given to the Zoning Board of Appeals at their meeting for next Thursday? I, I would like to, I would like to, I think it's important that this particular petitioner hear from the Planning Board.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
I think we're getting pretty good at writing letters of recommendation, and maybe.
More of non-recommendation.
Maybe a letter of non-recommendation might be something we can try now.
A letter of dissent.
So just a couple of things, if I can, before I address that. I went over and I watched, looked at the balloon, and then I sat at the post office, and then there's this huge monopole behind the post office.
75, right?
That's exactly what I'm about to get to.
80, sorry.
80 feet.
Okay, so we're 40 feet, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Well, that's exactly, all right, that is 80 feet, and this is going to be. I just, I just.
50% higher.
I don't want to say I'm loss of words, because I'm never loss of words, but I'm, and I'm never speechless, but, I mean, when you look at this picture, I mean, look at the trees. A telephone pole is 65 feet, and when you looked at the picture that Kathy put up, where they put the imposed clock tower on it, there's the telephone pole there to the left.
Yeah.
The bottom of the box is above the telephone pole. Now, I kind of like to keep my eyes on the road, so I think that's kind of a distraction, number one.
Two o'clock, you can't read.
And I saw, number two, and inappropriate for the location in that we've been for years trying to address the visual aspects of Route 28. And I think this is against all of that. So if we were going to write a letter of opposition, then I'm in favor of a letter of opposition.
And that address, actually, Mr. Saban, that addresses in Kathy's note to us from yesterday, the, the monopole idea, they changed it to a clock tower. The monopole that's right behind the post office looks like a flagpole. And we've said that before, we said that in the letter on June 2nd, 2021.
When they built the monopole in Howard's at, at 140, 137? 137 and 1, you know, where 400 East is?
Yeah, 39.
39.
39 and 137.
There's, there's a monopole there, and they actually used it as a flagpole.
They suggested that a long time ago, and they said that they cannot do that type of concealed antenna monopole because of their 5G technology. And this is where the, the last bullet item comes in. We need to have a peer review for somebody who can talk the same language and look at, you know, whether there are other options, do they really need to be that tall? Can this cam-style of, of a, of a pole work for them? What about these toppers that Verizon is constantly putting up all over town? The best service in the entire town of Yarmouth is from Verizon, and how are they making it work? And is it, is it a combination of the radio tower, a lower cam, and, and these toppers? Or something along those lines to fill their gap? There is a gap. I mean, I mean, the commissioner, you know, I think, agreed that there is a gap. Do you need to fill that gap with something this tall, or in this particular way? That's the question, is there another way of doing it?
So maybe, I recall, I don't know what company it was, but Centerville Church, they wanted to put it.
It was in the steeple.
They wanted to put it in the steeple. So those people might be able to give you some background as to those people that have that peer review-type knowledge.
No, you, I'm sorry, ZBA has Chapter 53G, which would allow them to ask for a peer review and have the applicant pay for it. You guys have it as well.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Goodwin.
Can I make, can I make a motion that we write a letter in harmony, that we ask for a peer review?
That was one of the suggestions in Kathy's memo to us.
Because I am not, I'm familiar with radio towers, and in radio towers, we need bays. And the bays aren't up and down, they go perpendicular, they go, they stay flush even with the ground and then get raised, raised from there. So an FM tower needs to have things protruding from it to send out the signal. And if, if what they're saying is they need bays to do their technology, then maybe they can't. But if a peer review can review it and say, no, you don't need a bay, you can do it in X and Y, then we could find a win-win.
I just think you need to be clear on what you're hoping to get. I mean, you're concerned about the location, the height.
I don't think you're going to move the project. I, I don't think it's going to another piece of land, because nobody else is giving them a lease.
What about the height, Brad, do you think that different methodologies, combinations?
Well, that's, if, you made a good point. Maybe the peer review can say, we can use the XTK tower, and we can use something here and here to get the adequate, the adequate coverage we need to bring it up to snuff. I mean, our tower is too far to the west, they said. It had the height, and it had the gain, but it was too far to the west.
But they, they did everything individually.
Exactly, maybe they can offset it. Now, the tower companies in the building are building towers, but maybe they could do something at 80 feet and also use the XTK tower, or use, you know, something, you know, along those lines. But I think if we ask for a review, then maybe you can get these questions answered. And then we can circle all the way back and have our fight of 119 feet or 110 feet.
I think the cam that's behind the, I mean, Brad makes all excellent points, the little bit of things that I did learn. The cam is stacked across the street. What he's, what they're saying they would need is a, if they had it in, in a cam, is they'd want to have it like this. So the cam would be like a six-foot, it wouldn't look like the pole, the innocuous pole behind the, the post office. It would be this mini water tower, I don't know what it would look like up, up how many feet in the air. The actual, the grade elevation behind the post office, I think, is like 10 feet or 15 feet taller, so that helps them naturally with that.
It's called Height Above Average Terrain, HAAT.
So, so, Mr. Goodwin, you've made a motion on the content of the, of the letter, that the primary message be to, as Kathy has suggested in her notes to us, to recommend a peer review be conducted to evaluate the coverage gap and evaluate whether other less intrusive options, including but not limited to cams and pole-top antennas, could be used.
And existing, and existing FM towers in Yarmouth.
And existing RF towers in Yarmouth.
Well, I'd say, well, you can say RF, I'd say it's existing towers.
Yep. As well as whether the tower could be reduced in height and still address a reasonable amount of coverage gap. So it's Kathy, it's essentially your fourth bullet, as I see it. Am I stating that correctly, Mr. Goodwin?
Yes, but it looks like, and I'm just assuming here, because I've only dealt with one tower company when we were redoing the tower for Cool 102, which is 504 feet, 504 feet above average terrain in Yarmouth, is that I'm, I believe that they want height, because they're covering their costs, and they need the extra two bays to make things financially salable. So I don't think they're going to want to drop height, but you can bring it up. That's why they've got number three and number four sitting there.
Probably never to be used. Is there too low?
No, they'll be used, but they'll be used for something else. Maybe even, you know, bouncing a radio signal for police or fire, something on those lines, which doesn't need the same height that we use in the, in the radio world.
Mr. Saban?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, they're seeking a variance?
Wave, the, well, cell towers have certain protections, and the way our bylaw is written is that you can waive certain things. We do have a height requirement that this is exceeding, but the, the Zoning Board of Appeals has the ability to waive that, and that's what they're asking for, they're asking for, for a waiver from the height.
So we, we have a motion on the floor with regard to what Mr. Goodwin has said, and I believe it's captured primarily in your bullet, Kathy. Did we want to add anything else?
I guess I was asking, that's, I'm just, was wondering if you wanted to talk about, you know, any of the concerns about, that we talked about in the DRI letters, which were related to, you know, the height along Route 28 and all our planning efforts?
I would like to add to the, add to the motion and suggest that all of the letters that were sent to the Cape Cod Commission be part of the, the package as attachments.
I'd like that to be a separate motion, because I didn't support the letters, and I don't want to support them now.
I apologize, Mr. Goodwin, you're right. So we'll have a separate, we'll have a separate submission on the, on the letters.
So Madam Chair, do we need a second on Brad's motion?
We need a second on Brad's motion.
I'll second Brad's motion.
Any, any further discussion?
And so, can I just be clear that this will be something that the chair and staff will work on to develop and you guys are okay with that?
This will just be the technical. I'm hoping this motion will cover just the technical aspects we're asking for the peer review. Nothing about whether we want it purple or orange or anything.
No, it's peer review. Its focus will be on peer review.
Thank you.
And as a separate submission.
Are we going to vote on that?
We're going to take a vote on this.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Kathy. We'll take a vote on this. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
And me as well. Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. And as a separate submission to the zoning board of appeals, the three letters, I believe there are three letters that we sent to the Cape Cod Commission.
Site plan review stuff as well as our letters?
They have that, that the site plan review comments, responses. That's something that was part of their application. They had a lot more application materials. It was just quite detailed. So that's why I sent you guys the links on laser fees to look through.
Do they have our, do they already have these letters? They do not. Okay, so we need, I guess we need a motion to transmit the three letters sent from the planning board on June 2nd, December 2nd, and December 16th.
2021.
2021, to the Cape Cod Commission regarding the Blue Sky Towers monopole in Yarmouth.
Who made the motion? Are you asking for a motion?
I'm asking for a motion. It's Susan Second. Mr. Goodwin?
I, no.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
And me, yes.
Just point of clarification. Do I send my letters as well, just as, again, as I did before?
You may. Sure, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else on this, Kath? We're good?
Sorry, can you clarify again? When is that hearing? Is that next week?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
So Kathy and I will work on the simple, essentially, letter on the requesting peer review.
I would anticipate that the hearing would be continued and that.
To allow for the.
To allow for the peer review. But the ZBA could say, no, we have sufficient information and we're going to make our determination. It's up to them.
Okay. Next, meeting minutes. I don't believe we have any, Kath. Committee updates?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Drove by the new Dennis Yarmouth Intermediate Middle School today and it was bustling. So just like to, now that I'm in the future, I was in the past last time we met. I'd like to now celebrate the fact that the new Dennis Yarmouth Intermediate Middle School is open and that the very, very kind people who supported it found, are now going to realize quite an addition to our town and to the future citizens of our town. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We may have covered this at our last meeting, Will. Is there going to be an open house?
Yes, because Mr. Saban asked. I don't have any details on that yet, but I would ask Kathy if you catch wind of anything or whoever catches wind of it first will certainly bring it back.
It will be you, my friend. You're tapped right in there.
I don't know, but, yeah, well, there will be, Madam Chair. I just, I'm not aware of the exact details yet.
Okay, great.
And it is unclear, in fact, I think unlikely, that there will be Springtown meeting there, but.
Because of the chairs.
Well, I know, but then I heard that maybe the chair, who knows?
Ooh.
I'd rather not be definitive. I would say, plan on Mattakes is what I would say.
Last hour.
Have to decide by the end of the month anyway.
With the big decisions that are coming in April. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other?
Do we get to rip a chair out of Mattakes and take it with us like they do when they demo ballparks?
I'll tell you a quick fun story. I have a chair from Memorial Stadium in Baltimore. So.
There you go.
They did the same thing and it is not impossible to get artifacts. And I did it legally. They had a legal purchase. So just to be clear on that for the record. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hey, hey, hey.
Depends on where you're from. Would you like one from Sullivan Stadium? Sorry.
We're Oriole fans. That's why we would want it.
Thank you, Mr. Saban.
Well, it's Fenway South. The last I was there, the last time I was there.
Except for last season when they finished fifth.
Any other committee updates?
Madam Chair, I.
Mr. Saban?
I have a quick one. CEDC met yesterday and has prepared its budget for next year. Part of our discussion goes back to what we were talking about earlier tonight about wastewater and the CEDC is going to start looking at ways to bring business into our town. We're going to be talking to some state officials who can talk to us about different types of programs that are available and other ways that we can attract people to Yarmouth instead of them going to other communities. So CEDC is working on that. But again, the most important part is that we did get our budget prepared last night. The second hat I have is Drive-In Site Committee and I'll take off the CEDC hat, put that away. Zoning Board of Appeals gave us an approval for the use of the boardwalk in a residential area and one more step closer to our actual breaking of grounds.
Yeah, the next big thing will be the CPA request at annual town meeting as well as the free cash grant. Ask it annual town meeting, so.
Yes, thank you for those.
And what are the dollar amounts associated?
Oh, you're going to make me say it.
Three and three.
It's $3 million in undesignated funds and then a request for $3 million of bonding authorization based on future CPA funds revenues.
Any other committee updates? Okay. Kathy, correspondence or staff updates that you wanted to brief us on? Or we've got everything?
I'm sorry, I can't think of anything. I'm sure I'll think of stuff as soon as the meeting is over. Sorry. I usually write a little list, but I didn't.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Madam Chair, I, just looking ahead, I'm sorry, I won't be able to attend the next meeting.
March 15th is our next meeting?
I'm sorry, I will not be there.
Okay.
I will not be at the April 5th meeting.
Okay.
Next meeting after that.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
We wanted you to collect yourself, collect your thoughts.
You guys, you're all looking at me like, what did I miss?
We were being respectful.
Thank you.
We're letting you catch up.
Any heads up for the March 15th that you, that, anything bursting on that one?
Nothing for the March 15th. I think we will get an HMOD 2 public hearing for the red jacket, actually. They're coming before site plan review for some relatively minor changes, but they're, they look really nice. They're going to redo the pool. They're going to have like a little different, like a little cabana area and like a pergola. Looks really, really nice. But that technically is an HMOD 2 and you guys are the design review authority for work in the HMOD 2. This will be the first HMOD 2 project I have participated in, so.
All right.
A milestone.
I'm just not sure when that will come. That needs to be a formally noticed public hearing. So that's going to, you know, take at least 30 days after they submit to kind of get that in the works.
So you're saying it won't be on the 15th or it will be on?
It will not be on the 15th. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's in the pipeline.
It's in the pipeline, probably, I would think. Probably end up being early, early May at this point. Maybe the last meeting in April.
Okay. Any other board member items? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Speak at once, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Crowley, aye.
Thank you.